Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Parvitz to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa. Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes, present here.
Mr. Metta? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neill?
Present.
And Ms. Robinson?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the March 27th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:00 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you use to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. We will begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 2024 School Committee fiscal year 25 budget hearing and meeting. Is there a motion?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Parvitz, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins? Mr. Fernandez? Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved. The minutes are approved.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair Robinson, and good evening to all of the members. I wanted to begin tonight by just talking a little bit about a wonderful community meeting that I attended at St. Stephen's Youth Programs on Monday night. We remember Polanco Garcia is the organizational director of Family Engagement. I also want to thank you, Chair, Vice Chair O'Neill, and Dr. Alkins for joining the meeting. It was a really productive conversation that allowed me and members of my team to answer important questions from parents and caregivers. Some of the same issues that have been raised by members during this year's budget process. Some of the topics that we talked about were Title I funds and how we're using them to support our English language learners and further clarification around the technical recoding of issue that's among our bilingual educators. As I shared with families, we've done a lot of work this year to strengthen our school side councils so that there are strong partnerships with families to ensure that they understand what Title I funds are and how they can be used. I also shared that Chief Joel Gomery and her team continue to work with schools to ensure they're strategically spending Title I funds to support our English learners. It was really a wonderful evening, as it always is at St. Stephen's. There was good food, just great discussion and ideas about how we can all work together to support the most important thing we have, which is our children. And I know that I always get welcome back, as does my team, and we'll look forward to that future conversation. I want to talk a little bit about how last week we announced the launch of the new Win the Day campaign that's aimed at significantly improving student attendance rates across 10 Region 8 schools. The campaign goes for the next eight weeks, and it lasts from March 11th through May 20th. We understand the crucial role that regular attendance plays in academic success, so we're deploying really a multi-passated approach to how we engage students and families in the conversation about chronic absenteeism. We're utilizing certainly some evidence-based strategies, direct interventions, and targeted incentives to really get at the root causes of chronic absenteeism. And I know we've had a lot of conversation in this committee about that. We chose Region 8 due to a high rate of chronic absenteeism, but also the diversity of the schools. And so to give you a sense of the schools, there is another course to college, there's Boston Arts Academy, BCLA McCormick, who we'll hear from later tonight, Boston International Newcomers Academy, which we call Binka, Boston Collaborative High School, Excel High School, Greater Eggleston High School, the Henderson K-12 Inclusion School, Margarita Muniz, and New Mission High School. We know the spring is the time of year when attendance rates typically begin to decrease, and we're really trying to prevent that. And that means really reaching out to our students and to our families in partnership. Win the Day represents, it's actually something that the students came up with and designed, but Win the Day represents a safety net created to really slow and address the trend. So we'll look forward to sharing more updates and our successes in working with our families and students for that Region 8 group of schools. I also want to celebrate Early College Day. Nearly 60 of our BPS students visited the Massachusetts State House on Thursday, March 21st, to participate in the annual Early College Day. These students represented Brighton High School, Charlestown High School, Dearborn, East Boston High School, Fenway High, and Madison Park. The students participated in door knocking to legislators to advocate for increased access to early college opportunities and improve pathways to higher education. They also had an opportunity to tour the State House and see things like the Senate chambers. Last week, the Governor's Office announced that East Boston High School is the site of one of three new early college partnerships across the state. East Boston High School will partner with Fisher College. And this brings the total number of RBPS schools with early college to eight. So we're very proud of this. We obviously want to expand this across all of our high schools, and this is a wonderful start. And I certainly appreciated the students and the staff's advocacy in this important area. The Horace Mann took a field trip. They had 12 first graders from the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, and they visited the MBTA's Emergency Training Facility in South Boston last week to learn more about how public transportation works in general. Students explored decommissioned train car and bus and asked the employees about their work and learned about their roles. Thank you to the MBTA for hosting our students for what was a fun and informative hands-on learning opportunity for our Horace Mann first graders. This week, the Mozart Elementary School in Rosendale is hosting Her Story, a celebration of Women's History Month, where leaders from across the city are planning to share their stories with students about their work. Yesterday, Stephanie Everett, Suffolk County Probate and Family Court Register, Diane Broncheck, who is our District 5 City Councilor, sorry, and our District 5 City Councilor Enrique Pepins, Chief of Staff, and Leah Serena, who's the Boston or the BTU's Field Rep, they all spoke to students about their careers and their experiences. Speakers at this year's event also included BPS's own Chief of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Leslie Ryan Miller, and Holmes Innovation School Leader, Dr. Leanne Odom. I want to say a special thank you to all of the speakers for their time and their generosity in sharing about their life and their experience with our students. And finally, I want to just remind, this is summer jobs time for us in the BPS. I want to just remind all eligible BPS students that the city's 2024 summer jobs are open, and youth ages 14 to 18 can apply. Last week, I joined Mayor Wu to launch Future Boss. This is a hub for youth job opportunities and resources. It includes our well-known Success Link Summer Jobs Program, as well as additional job opportunities. I want to thank Mayor Wu for her guaranteeing a summer job for every eligible BPS student who wants one. Last summer, more than 9,000 young people found jobs and internships through the City of Boston Summer Job Program. And we know that young people who work a summer job or an internship, they build their professional skills, they get to meet other young people, and they gain mentors. They get paid for their work, and in general, they have a lot of fun and they speak very positively about the experience. This year, the city is holding several job fairs in May and piloting application support workshops in three of our BPS high schools to give our ninth and 10th graders help with the onboarding process. You can look out for those workshops at Boston Arts Academy, at EMK Academy for Health Careers, and at English High School. BPS students can also visit boston.gov/futureboss to view the 2004 Success Link job offerings, and there's also additional job resources there. Lots of wonderful and great news happening in the BPS. That concludes my report, Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm, we each have five minutes, one to two questions, and also I'd like to remind BPS staff to be brief in their responses. Thank you. Are there any questions? Any comments? Once. I just, before we move on, I just want to thank... Oh, Rafaela, go ahead. Sorry. Ms. Polanco Garcia? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Quiero agradecer públicamente a la superintendente y a su staff por ir a nuestra organización San Stevens Youth Program.
I'd like to publicly appreciate the superintendent and her staff for being there at our San Stevens Program.
Los padres estaban, tuvimos una conversación muy robusta y pudimos obtener respuesta a una petición que los padres habían hecho a la superintendente y a las autoridades escolares.
We had a very robust conversation, and we were able to respond to a petition that had to do with the authorities of the Boston Public Schools.
Y como siempre, los padres insisten en poder tener mayor participación y ser tomado más en cuenta, y creo que en la noche del lunes conseguimos que la superintendente y su staff tuvieran, dijeran que tenían ese compromiso.
She was a very enriching meeting, and we have to note as well that the community, they are always willing to participate. They're asking for participation. And Monday night, they confirmed that, with the staff being present, that they were able to see the public participating, they were taken in consideration.
Sí, así que muchas de las preguntas que muchos padres tenían han tenido mucha preocupación con el presupuesto y muchas de las preguntas que los padres, de las preguntas que los padres tenían fueron contestados por la superintendente y el staff, y quiero agradecerle de verdad que haya tenido la gentileza y haya tenido el tiempo para ir a contestar las preguntas.
So we have to point out as well that many of the committee members had different questions, multiple questions regarding the budget. Questions that were answered. Therefore, I would like to appreciate the superintendent being present, the staff being present, and being able to answer the questions that the committee had regarding the budget.
Y reiterar el compromiso que asumió la superintendente de que estos encuentros con la comunidad de padres van a ser más continuos y más constantes.
Would like to reiterate the commitment that the superintendent had of the promise that these type of encounters and events will take place in a more frequent basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and I do also want to, go ahead, Mr. O'Neill.
Probably going to be saying what the others said as well, but thanks to Member Polanco Garcia for an incredibly informative and thoughtful and respectful conversation. It was a, it was great learning for me, so... And really enjoyed hearing from the parents from a wide range of schools and perspectives. So the more of these we can do, the better, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, Member Polanco Garcia, for putting it together and hosting it.
And again, I just want to reiterate another rousing thank you to you and to the St. Stephen's community for welcoming us and for the wonderful thoughtful conversation that we had, and also to thank the staff who also came out that night, also to join in that process. The only other comment I want to say is I am thrilled to hear about the opportunity for any Boston Public School student that's eligible to have a summer job. That's huge. And I'm hoping that all of our students, in all of their capacities, will take advantage of that, that opportunity. That's it. So with that, I just want to thank Superintendent for report, and now I will entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Parvitz, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved. The motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvitz?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 26 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from the speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their times to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. We'll begin with Robert Jenkins, Mike Heisman, Morgan Kohane, Ali Little, and Laura Jimenez. Robert Jenkins? Robert Jenkins?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, could you please turn on your camera?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to thank School Committee Chair Robinson, School Superintendent Skipper. I want to thank you for definitely letting me speak tonight. Superintendent Skipper, extending Paul O'Neill as the interim school leader for Madison Park is a very great thing for us. We are very, we are very enjoyed in his short tenure at the school. He has made the alumni feel very welcome. We had a big event last weekend, as I stated, over 70 to 80 alumni students. There's an ongoing program that is going on with BPS and Corey McCarthy's team in doing intramerals, as well as attendance to be involved in intramerals, tutoring aspect program, a Sunday program for the community at Madison Park, which BCYF, you know, pulled out because of, you know, they said they couldn't get hold of the building. One of the things that I would reiterate that I also, we also, the Madison Park Alumni Association supports definitely the working with other city agencies such as BCYF at Madison Park. Our pool is getting done over, the locker rooms, the community. Corey has a Sunday program going on. We really enjoy that. We look at it as the whole hub school component involving the entire school community. We're going to be happy once on April 25th, the Manhunt Community Center will be back online. That is going to be a key factor in working with the Mayor's Office on getting jobs. That is another one that we all enjoy. But one of the things that I would like BPS to look at is the involvement of giving more parents involved in the school area.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Heisman.
Mike Heisman, Beja Dorchester. The BPS strategic vision begins with, at BPS, every child in every classroom is entitled to an equitable, world-class, high-quality education. This proposed budget does not support your vision. Your reimagined school funding steering committee recommends fully fund resources needed for students with disabilities and multilingual learners first at every school. Ensure a baseline of funded resources at all schools. This is not with this budget proposals. Many of our children attend under-resourced and substandard school facilities. Too often, conditions are deplorable. Your budget proposals to make this abuse and neglect worse. Many members of the community have spoken against this budget at your recent meetings. I can't remember anyone speaking in favor. They have shared their pain and have asked you not to harm their children. This is a painful austerity budget proposal. The English philosopher Edmund Burke a long time ago said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men," let's say good people, "to do nothing." Whose side are you on? Will you support a system that plans to continue harming many of our children or stand with our children and their families who deserve much better? You already know, or you wish...
30 seconds.
That you have no choice. You have to vote yes. Is impotence a part of your job description? Years ago, school committee member Regina Robinson was not reappointed because she had abstained and voted no too much. This could happen to you. Today, you're being asked to vote in favor of a budget that will provide lesser resources and more suffering. You have the power to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Heisman. Next speaker, Morgan... Morgan Kohane. No, yes, Morgan Kohane.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Kohane, and I have been the teacher librarian at the PA Shaw since 2014. In 2021, I spoke to the school committee and thanked you for your approval and support of the BPS Library Services Strategic Plan. I couldn't have been happier to know that every student would have access to a high-quality school library program. To prove the value of the library on a daily basis, my colleagues and I coordinate visits with award-winning authors and illustrators, collaborate with teachers, lead information literacy lessons, and incorporate computer programming and robotics. In February, I received a call while out on maternity leave that after 10 years as a full-time librarian, my position was being reduced to part-time because the library position did not align with the district's inclusion plans. I can't think of a more inclusive place than the library, especially the Shaw Library, which has been nationally recognized for its award-winning inclusive programming and meaningful partnerships. A program that has been highlighted in the media for its centering the needs of underserved students in alignment with the district's focus on equitable literacy. A program in which I have raised over $165,000 in grant funding, including in 2022 being recognized by the mayor and city of Boston by the Heart of America STEM Transformation Grant I received. This is not to promote myself, but to say that I believe a library with a full-time certified librarian should be foundational. I am grateful that my position was somewhat restored after reminding the district that, under the strategic plan, it would be inequitable to have a part-time librarian serving hundreds of students in the upcoming Shaw-Taylor merger. I will now be in two campuses. I am not the only librarian whose position has been impacted or whose school is no longer receiving an investment. I hope that the school committee-approved Library Services Strategic Plan is being followed with fidelity across the district in the name of positively impacting students' lives. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ali Little. Ali Little?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. My name is Ali Little. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Orchard Gardens, and I live in Jamaica Plain. I apologize that my video is a little bit lagging right now, but thank you to Superintendent Skipper and to members of the school committee for having me here for this comment. I'm just here to speak on the importance of not only school libraries, but having librarians and librarian paras in every school. As a teacher in BPS for the past three years, I've seen firsthand the importance of this in getting students excited and motivated about reading. Our librarian at our school gets to know hundreds of students, their interest in books, makes sure that we have those books stocked in our library, follows up with students to see what they think about a novel, and if they're ready for the sequel. She's worked with students one-on-one to create challenges, to encourage reluctant readers to finish books, which we know is really important. She's brought in authors so students can see themselves as a future author or illustrator. Our librarian Para has done book talks in my classroom, again, getting students excited and interested and engaged with reading. As we are aiming for equitable literacy across the district, I believe this has to include equitable access to engaging, motivating books that students want to read, and we need librarians and librarian paras in all of our schools to be able to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Laura Jimenez. She doesn't seem to be in the meeting. So the next group of speakers will be Emmanuel Opongo Yeboa.
I'm here.
Sorry?
I'm actually here.
Oh, thank you. All right.
That's all right. So my name is Laura Jimenez. I'm a researcher at Boston University College of Education and Human Development. I specialize in children's literature and teacher education, and I'm here to talk directly to the libraries and the need for well-funded resources in libraries. There has been a literal renaissance in children's literature in the last 10 years. Picture books, graphic novels, novels written for elementary, middle, high school students. And these kids are able to see themselves in ways that folks my age and most of the folks on this, in this meeting, were not... and most of the folks on this, in this meeting, were not able to see themselves. Having that opportunity to see themselves in literature, exploring the world, creates an environment that makes them, that offers them a chance to read in ways that, again, folks my age didn't have, didn't, weren't interested in. I was not interested in reading about one more white guy with a dead dog. I just didn't care, right? Giving our students that ability to read about things that affect their lives, that interest them.
Thirty seconds.
Right? It means providing monies directly dedicated for staff and books. All the research shows that having staff and books, and that means audiobooks and electronic books, is only helpful and only leads to positive outcomes on other measures. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jimenez. Next group of speakers are Emanuel Opongbo Yeboa, David Vitale Wolf, Bonnie McBride, Jennifer Mason Stott, and Deep Ellis. Please raise your hand virtually Zoom. Mr. Opongbo, you can start.
Hello, my name is Emanuel Opongbo Yeboa. I'm a long-term Boston resident, and as of September 2023, I am the school librarian at the Joseph Lee School. Prior to becoming the school librarian at the Joseph Lee School, I was an English teacher for six years, and I entered the profession of liberialship largely because of the strategic investment that was made a couple years ago. There aren't many school librarians that look like me. The profession is very female and very white, and the ability of people like me to step into this profession has been enabled by the decisions that the school committee has made. Right now, we're at a pivotal point. I understand that budget lines make it difficult to continue to fund programs, but this strategic vision was thought through deliberate intention and drawn up through deliberate intention to make our schools a place where students felt represented, not only by the books that we maintain in the library's collection, but by the people servicing them. I'm speaking on my behalf, on the behalf of educators of color who are in this profession, but I'm also speaking on behalf of our parents, who are our lowest-paid workers and have been in our libraries trying to maintain their positions and even enter into liberialship themselves. I think it is so important that even as we're making these decisions, even as we're considering cuts to be made, that we continue to show our students and our educators what we value. And yeah, I hope you take that into consideration as you're making your decisions.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is David Vitale Wolf.
Hello. My name is David Vitale Wolf, a Boston resident and a librarian at the Curly K-8 School in Jamaica Plain. Superintendent Skipper, Chair Robinson, and members of the school committee, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. A library program staffed with a trained librarian and a library paraprofessional is an essential part of an inclusion program that provides students with access to enabling texts, which is a core component of the Equitable Literacy Program. I encourage you all to commit to continue to fund a library, librarian, and library paraprofessional at every Boston school. In my role at the Curly, the library paraprofessional and I focus on supporting those students who are not yet decoding, but who are eager to read age-appropriate literature. That is, the fifth grader with dyslexia who sees their friends reading Percy Jackson and says, "That looks fun. I wish I could do that," or the third grader left out of a joyful book circle because they aren't yet able to decode L. Ray Jakes. Are these students to be left out of the empathy-building, joy-inducing, friendship-creating experience of literature because they cannot yet put sound to shapes? We, as librarians, say no. We say that everyone is a reader. A key role of a fully-staffed library is to teach students, teachers, and families about how young people can access books they seek to read by linking them with the books they want to read. How do we do this? We train students on reading technology like Sora, Learning Ally, and Gale, and it's our responsibility to keep up-to-date and assistive technology. So I ask you, please fund the libraries, because we are trainers, advocates, and culture changers who assert that we are all readers, period.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Bonnie McBride.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie McBride, JP resident and a teacher librarian at Family High. You may remember me from the December thirteenth school committee meeting where I was recognized as the 2023 Massachusetts Super School Librarian of the Year. I'm here tonight to speak to my concern in regards to the Library Services Strategic Plan as approved by the school committee back in 2021. Right now, instead of the planned twenty librarian positions being funded for next year, as the plan dictates, only two are being funded. Where did those allocated funds go for the other eighteen positions? I am one of those eighteen unfunded positions. I'm so grateful that for the past nine years, my school community has seen the work of a librarian and has chosen to continue funding my position. Yet, it feels rather ironic that my library, which has been profiled nationally for my work on independent reading, inclusion, our diverse text, digital literacy, and more, and was chosen as an example of what all BPS students will have access to eventually, is not being funded by the district. So it feels like the district doesn't see the value in funding my position. What's even worse is that one of my colleagues, who is currently a library para at the Beethoven, was told her school was going to be getting a centrally-funded librarian position starting next school year. So she spent time and money to become a certified librarian, and now there's no position. I understand that this is a difficult budget year.
Thirty seconds.
I need to point out that no librarian positions were being funded with ester funds. The money existed and was allocated. Where's it going now? Who is making sure this library investment continues? Where is the accountability? It looks from my perspective that someone has decided to stop this investment. Why? Is it just a pause because of the bad budget year, or are we no longer going through with this plan? I ask you to look into the fidelity of this investment and to not let it quietly disappear. All of our students deserve a fully-stocked library staffed by a certified school librarian.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jennifer Mason Stott.
Good evening, Superintendent Skipper, Chair Robinson, and members of the school committee. My name is Jen Mason Stott. I'm a parent of a JFK Elementary School student and live in Jamaica Plain, and I've been a public school librarian for sixteen years in a different district. But tonight, I'm speaking as a member of the BPS Library Services Advisory Board to remind the school committee of the library's strategic plan it committed to on October sixth, 2021. That's my birthday, and I'll tell you, it felt like a great gift at the time. As a parent at a BPS school that does not have a library or a librarian, I feel an urgency to get libraries going in every school right now. But my professional and board hat on says that the plan that was presented by Director Phipps Suero is smart. It's specific, measurable, and the way to do things right. And here's what I mean by that. The proposal was reviewed by the board, and it is scalable. It is to invest in seventeen schools, which are already operating libraries, improve the quality of these programs by providing thorough training to the current BPS library staff, and self-paced modules for the many, many teachers who would like to become librarians, just like Emanuel. Operating libraries were also chosen to mitigate some of the issues that have come up, which means delivery of books and furniture that were late, so you have a librarian with nothing to work with. And that way, the school year twenty-five, twenty-six can be planned for this time, so that in fall 2025, we can scale up and place operating libraries, collections, and staff in even more schools on day one. This plan acknowledges that funding for library personnel and programs can't be left to individual principals. They have to be funded centrally. Did you know that we do not have access to digital resources like audiobooks and eBooks in multiple languages unless there is a librarian staffed in that library? When there is...
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker is Deep Ellis.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about school librarians. My name is Deep Ellis. I am one of two librarians at Boston Latin School and a doctoral student in the School of Library and Information Science at Simmons University. I'm a JP resident and a parent of three Boston Public School, or former students and graduates of the Latin School. And we've heard so much about the excellent work going on in Boston Public Schools with our librarians. I'm going to add by sharing some research that I've learned about in my studies. First, I want to address the, how important it is to continue to centrally fund the school librarians. Research shows that decentralized budgets have a devastating, very negative impact on school libraries and diminish programs pretty rapidly. And this was confirmed just recently in a study, a large national study called Project Slide that was published last year. And so access to strong library programs in our district are, it's super important that they remain centrally funded. It's really an equity issue as well. The school libraries are increasingly becoming a privilege, and they should not be. And just to remind the committee of the Department of the Strategic Plan that was voted on and approved by, I'm going to take some words from it in October 2021, quote, "If we offer all students equitable access to effective school library programs, if we collaborate with educators and staff, if we..."
Thirty seconds.
"...partner with families and community members, we will become a significant element of high-performing, nation-leading districts at close gaps." So this is hard work. Many of our principals have not worked with school librarians, have not sustained and built library programs. Research shows they learn from their school librarians through collaborative work, so we can, and all work to support librarians and their...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next group of speakers are Margaret Bohara, Courtney Philly Harp, Cheryl Bachman, Deep Remanning, and Roy Harp. Margaret Bohara? Please, you can start.
Hello. Sorry. My name's Margaret Bohara. I'm from Henderson Inclusion School, and we have a letter that the governing board has written for the community. "We are writing as elected members of the Henderson Inclusion School's governing board. We are parents who care deeply about our students and about the future of our school. As you know, the Henderson Inclusion School is still without a permanent principal. After the tragic incidents surrounding our former principal, Patricia Lampont, a handful of individuals have temporarily assumed this position, with staff from the superintendent's office acting in a guiding and supporting role. Thank you for acknowledging the struggles that our school has faced during this time, during this timeframe. We know that you understand the instability that has been risen from this lack of permanent leadership, particularly in light of this year's budgeting scenario. We have concerns, however, that the district in its effort to provide support is in fact intervening and interfering to the extent that our innovation school's chartered mission has been compromised. We are an autonomous innovation school determined to deliver a fully-inclusive community experience from the time a child leaves their home in the morning until the time they come home at night. This is not the vision the district has for inclusion, and that is okay. The district is free to do inclusion within its developed framework. Our school's innovation is to write a fully-inclusive experience from the age of three to twenty-two, and we have been intentional in what that concept means to our community, or less of the time. It has become clear that rather than supporting our school and its innovation, the district staff has attempted to change the way we do inclusion and conform our school to an inclusive model that is not our mission, our vision, nor is it an appropriate intervention with regard to our autonomy. This is not supporting our school. This is changing it." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Courtney Philly Harp.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I originally signed up to testify tonight to discuss the budget process and reiterate some of the concerns that the Boston Globe laid out in its editorial earlier this week. Although it was reaching out to this body and its oversight role of the BPS district-wide budget, I felt like many of the criticisms and issues that it raised were consistent to what we, as the governing board at the Henderson Inclusion School, have been trying to get through our own budget process. In addition to some of the concerns that my friend Maggie has already laid out, specific to the budget, we have seen the interim leadership make drastically difficult decisions this year as a result of bad decisions that were made with ester funds that parents had actually specifically requested information on through the vast couple of years and were ignored by interim leadership. This underscores the need for a permanent leader at our school who will keep our mission and support our school's innovation and not rely on others' bad information to make decisions. But again, this issue, and coming here is something that is becoming all too regular a pattern from our school, was further exacerbated last night when the current chair of the head of school search committee decided to pause our search committee over the objections of the governing board chair and without prior consultation with anyone else on the committee or the governing board. This has crossed the line into what Maggie was talking about, where the district is now interfering with our school's ability to self-govern in its own autonomy. It is really frustrating. We appreciate the school's support of our mission, but this has got to change. This is not support. This is direct interference, and this is quelling of parent voice and engagement, something the superintendent says she values, and we are asking you to make a change in leadership on this community so that our process can continue to move forward.
Next speaker is Cheryl Bachman.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Bachman. I'm a former BPS student and also a parent to a special needs student who is a fifth grader at the Dever in Dorchester. I'm also a member of FAMCOSA and a long-life resident of South Boston. I'm here tonight to ask you to not play this dangerous game with a high-quality education. As you know, the school my son attends went into receivership in 2014. Even when the Dever community then rallied for it not to, the state didn't listen to those parents. Teachers or staffers, the Dever lost fifteen percent of its Latin ratio in the state-of-the-art dual-language program. And now with these budget cuts, they can lose even more teachers, staffers, and programs. Haven't our children already suffered enough in this process? Why are we playing tug-of-war with education? Shouldn't we be investing in our child's future by adding more programs and more teachers? Our children are our tomorrow's future and beyond. Without the proper materials, teachers, or places to learn, how do they spread their wings and thrive? Cutting the budget is a major slap in the face to our teachers who have been our superheroes for our children during the pandemic. to our teachers who have been our superheroes for our children during the pandemic. This is how we repay them, by telling them they can lose their jobs. This is how we repay our children, by telling them the programs they love, they won't have. What are we doing wrong? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bachman. Next speaker is Deidre Manning, followed by Roy Carp.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Deidre Manning. I'm a single parent and sole supporter of two minor children who lives in Dorchester. Standards-based grades, one through four, with four reflecting a mastery of a subject and three considered meeting expectations or being on grade level, were identified by Vice Chair O'Neill in a WBUR report in 2017 titled "Boston Public School Students May Be at a Disadvantage for Getting Into Boston Latin School" as a reason why BPS students were not being admitted to BLS. In the report, Vice Chair O'Neill was quoted as saying, "Our suspicion is that because of the disparity in two types of grading, BPS students are at a disadvantage when it comes to GPA. The district is considering going back to using the A-B-C-D grading system." He said to get a four, you have to show you're close to one year ahead of your grade. The district did not change the grading system. Instead, they decided to use a conversion process for standard-based grades that gave a twelve in any subject that was a four and a nine for any three. This was done to remedy the bias against BPS students in the GPA calculation. I reached out to the Exam School Project Manager in January 22nd of 2024, asking for clarification on how ODA would calculate standard-based grades for sixth grade. I provided all my daughter's grades and after three follow-ups, finally received a response on February 29th, 2024, with details on how ODA calculated the GPA. The ODA calculated GPA was 10.9375. Yesterday afternoon, I received notification from BPS that my daughter's GPA score was a 10.3125, representing a loss of four composite score points from the maximum one-hundred score she could receive. When I inquired about the difference, I learned that BPS requires non-BPS schools-
Thank you, Ms. Manning.
I'm sorry?
Thank you. Your time is up.
I didn't get the thirty-second warning.
Yes, you did. It's fine. You can if you can send us, if you can please send us your written testimony.
I can, but please direct ODA to treat non-BPS charter public school students the same way.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Roy Carp.
Good evening. My name is Roy Carp. I am one of several concerned parents from the Henderson Inclusion School testifying tonight. You may recall I testified last week to talk about the ways in which our school's core values and founding mission of full inclusion are being systematically undermined by district officials while we are in our third year under interim leadership. Since last week, the situation has sadly gone from bad to worse in ways that are deeply troubling. Yesterday, members of the Governing Board received an email from our regional superintendent assigned to our school saying that he had suspended our head of school search process. This was done without any discussion or vote by the search committee or the Governing Board, which formed that committee. This decision was also made over the express opposition of our Governing Board Chair. The stated reason for this drastic measure is that parents and only parents on the Governing Board were not following meeting norms. The letter lacked any specificity as to what norms were being violated and how. This is the kind of gaslighting and shaming of parent voice and advocacy that has been happening to us now for months. The email to the Governing Board then has the audacity to say that we need to be collaborative and restorative. For almost three years, Henderson parents have been clamoring for restorative practices to address broken trust and strengthen community by centering relationships and honoring the voice and dignity of all stakeholders. But every time we take steps in that direction, we experience actions like this one, like this that attempt to gaslight us for our advocacy and punish our community that's not restorative. In this instance, by holding up our holding up our process of finding the kind of school leader that we need and that our school desperately needs. This is not a game. Time is of the essence for our children and their ability to experience a fully inclusive learning community. We urge the district to stop undermining our mission and to instead support the Henderson School. Thank you for listening and for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Our next pe- group of speakers, Jessica Butler, Louis Bergelson, Cassandra Samuel, Tracy Billy, and Esther Pimentel. Jessica Butler.
Hi, my name is Jessica Butler. I'm a Henderson parent of a K-1 student and Governing Board member and SBC co-chair. I'm going to be reading the second part of the letter that Maggie Bohara started. "The district must have a better understanding of what our school's needs are and a better understanding of how it can support them. We believe that the current district leadership team is toxic to parent voice and parent engagement. It car- it continues to bully parents to not engage. Of the fifteen parents who have served as officers of the Parent Council since 2223 school year, eight have removed one or all of their children from the Henderson. Please know that this is not a coincidence and that we use the term bullying very intentionally. It's unconscionable that the district leadership directly responsible while in a supervisory capacity for budgetary problems we are currently facing, which is 1.7 million deficit and a loss of at least fourteen FTEs, is allowed to continue to oversee our school's budget team and present the issues as if somehow they had nothing to do with setting up our children and students to fail without the resources critical to serving them. Parents have been accused of violating norms and vague overarching accusations without supportive facts and absent of important holistic context. Today, we bring to you a list of areas of concerns parents have raised despite district leadership's attempts to quell parent voice and interfere with our school and our children. First one, competency and transparency in overseeing the Henderson budget. Two, community involvement in the IPT process. Three, concerns around the hiring process. Four, comprehensive support of our innovation mission. And five, restorative process for past harms." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Louis Bergelson.
Hello. I'm Louis Bergelson. I'm also a parent at the Henderson, and I'm going to continue reading reading our letter. Concerns around the district's leadership ability to competently and transparently oversee the Henderson budget include short-sighted use of Esser funding to support fourteen staff positions with no plan to convert these roles with known expiration of the funds, lack of transparency around revenue streams for for the FY25 budget, resulting in $288,000 of unaccounted of uncounted funding, followed by concealment of this mistake from the Governing Board of the Greater Henderson Community, failure to provide clear and appropriate records of contracted services and misleading information when asked on multiple occasions to supply a clear and comprehensive accounting of the services. Concerns around community involvement in the IPT process include information to join IPT was inaccessible and not shared widely enough or through enough channels to ensure community awareness. There was no transparent information shared about the team's end purpose or funding goals, refusal to include interested and knowledgeable parents in the IPT process, separation of parent voices from IPT process by not accommodating parent availability and meeting scheduling, in fact excluding them or separating them from the broader team conversations. Meetings were scheduled for times when parents could not be present and parent participation is limited to follow-up calls with the IPT chair and refusal to request IPT funding despite obvious need for FY25-
Thirty seconds.
-of the budget deficit. We'll be cutting a co-teacher art special essential to our inclusion inclusive mission. And then concerns around the Henderson's hiring process include neglecting to hire staff early enough in the process to source quality candidates and sure teachers are properly licensed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Cassandra Samuel.
Hi, good evening, School Committee Superintendent Skipper and members of the community. My name is Cassandra Samuel, a product of Boston Public School and the proud library par at the Curly K-8 School in Jamaica Plain with 931 students. I am here today to discuss why it is so important for all schools to have a fully-staffed library that includes library par professional. I have worked for BPS for more than 20 years. And as every educator knows, our job doesn't end when the bell rings. I have personally established two fully-fledged library curated virtual libraries during COVID for my students and spend many hours outside of the school hours to do this work. Within the last two years, library parries who have built BPS libraries without a librarian have lost their jobs, three last year. This year, BPS has cut eight library parries. During that time, I would build two libraries. Staff would say to me, "Your day ended hours ago, and there's always tomorrow." I would reply, "If I don't get the job done right, I will go home and plan to come in early the next day." There were many days and nights that I would be in and out after admin. I wasn't compensated, but I did my job so the school libraries could open and give the student and the staff what they need from our school. When kids have access to library stocks with books that reflect their own experience, it makes them feel seen and inspires them to continue to learn. Our job requires more than one person. That is why we propose that all BPS schools have a librarian and a library par and that every school shall receive $20 per pupil annually annually to maintain or establish our libraries. Last week, in your school committed budget question, it says library par professional negative 1.9 increase in the budget. I know of eight library parries that were excess. I would appreciate the school committee can clarify how many library parries will not have a job next year.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Samuel.
Yeah.
Our next speaker is Tracy Billy.
Hello, is it my time? Yes. Thank you. My name is Tracy Billy, and I proudly served as a library par with BPS for over a decade. Throughout my tenure, I have, as a BPS resident, I'm sorry, as Boston resident and BPS parent, put together libraries throughout the community. One specifically is the Nathan Hale School. That's where I began my tenure. Right now, we are facing as library par is being cut. My position has been cut two times in the last two years. And it looks like we have not been mentioned in this investment in terms of statements that were made that no library parries would be cut, that library parries would, the vision would be that library parries would be working alongside librarians with schools of 500 students or more. I'm now in a school with 500 students or more, and my position has still been cut based on budgetary reasons. What that means for us is library parries being cut, and I think Cassandra mentioned nine of us, is that we have to seek positions that are comparable or we lose our pay rate that we've worked probably. I've also been in the system over 15 years. We lose our pay rate, the salaries that we've earned. Most of us have well-established libraries and work, like Cassandra said, over our time. So we are asking the school committee to consider us in an equitable resolution in our positions being cut. Thank you. Either we are restored as necessary, that we are alongside works alongside librarians, and that we also can be restored or retain our earned salary, which is important. This is the equitable solution was not put in this investment, and we're asking for you to consider it now, please, on behalf of the library parries that have run libraries and built them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Billy. Next speaker is Esther Pimentel.
Hello.
No, you can start.
Okay, thank you. My name is Esther Pimentel, and I am a elected board member at the Henderson School. And I'm going to continue to read off from my fellow parents' hour letter. So concerns around support for our innovation mission include decision to cut a co-teacher from a core-subject classroom in seventh grade history despite the Henderson's inclusion model of co-talk core subjects, decision to cut arts, music for grades K through K zero through fifth, and visual arts for grades second through fifth, despite art integration being a principle of our innovation plan. Decision to hire a C-grid specialist despite the innovation plan principle that services should be provided in the classroom to extend possible classroom time. After repeatedly reassuring community members that the Henderson inclusion model will be preserved, the district leadership team held closed-door meetings to discuss the Henderson's full school realignment, including a sub-separate strand starting in K zero. We also included this slide in our last board meeting, consor- concerns around implementing a restorative process for past harm, indifference and non-commitment to repeated parent requests for restorative meetings and validating parent elections in order to suppress and silence parent voices on the Governing Board in response to parents' public demand for accountability retaliation by un- un-illateral halting the Henderson's critical principles search. Using terms like collaborative, we're making unlateral decisions that are in no way collaborative. Using terms like restorative while at the same time making vague and unsupported accusations about us parents violating group norms. Restorative conversations with one-on-one meetings between parents and district leadership that in no way follow proper practices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next group of speakers are Brett Nadan Burash, Ross Kochman, Stephen Benjamin, Julia Keely, Carolyn Sessler, and Kiona Aviles. Could you please place your hands? Brett Nadan Burash.
Hi. This is very different. I'm sorry. Thank you for your time. Let me just pull up my talking points. Good evening. My name is Brett Naden Burash, and I live in Dorchester. I am a parent, an educator, and a Governing Board member at the Henderson K-12 Inclusion School. I'm here this evening to support Dr. Jean Roundtree in his capacity as chair of our school's Head of School Screening Subcommittee and his call for a short-term suspension of this group. I recognize choosing a new head of school is one of the most important decisions that the Governing Board needs to make. And I also want to move forward with urgency to collaboratively identify a permanent leader for our school. We have an obligation to our students, our educators, and the school community to do so. I also recognize that it is just as important that we, as a community, work together to create the conditions necessary for a new school leader to be successful. We, as a governing board, need to come together to engage in difficult but critical conversation related to our norms and values, how we live them out as a community, and how we interact with each other. We also need to discuss how we can support each other to adhere to our norms and how to address consistent norm violations. If we do not briefly pause to address some of these longstanding cultural issues, which have already interfered with the Head of School Screening Subcommittee's work, we will fall back into some of the same challenges that have prevented us from achieving the true mission and vision of our inclusive school.
Thirty seconds.
As a long-serving educator and parent of two children at the Henderson, I will hold Dr. Roundtree and Central Office accountable for providing support to achieve two goals in the short term. One, to create the space and for families, educators, and administrators to come together to address these longstanding concerns around norms and values and actions that match these beliefs. And two, in collaboration with the community, select a school leader who will enter into a role where conditions are such that the leader has impact.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ross Kochman.
Hello.
Hello, you can start.
Hello, my name is Ross Kochman. I live in Jamaica Plain. My child attends the Mendel Elementary School, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at the Henderson K-12 Inclusion School. I first want to offer my support to the librarians and library parries. Listen to them, please. I have been involved in the Henderson community for about 15 years now, and I am deeply committed to its success in the future. I've always strived to partner with parents in my work and value the ideas and input of parents. I'm here tonight, this evening, to support a short-term suspension of our school leader hiring process. I recognize this is one of the most important decisions the board needs to make. And as an educator, I also want to move forward with urgency to identify a permanent leader for our school. However, it is just as important that we work as a community together to create the conditions for a transformational leader to be successful. This short-term suspension will allow us time- This short-term suspension will allow us time to come together as a community to engage in difficult but critical conversations related to our norms and values. Parent testimonies tonight make it clear that they have been accused of harming others and that they feel they have also been harmed. The best way to address these harms is with a restorative process. If we continue this search without a short pause to address some of these issues, we may fall back into similar challenges that have prevented us from achieving the true vision and mission of our school. As a long-serving educator of the school, I appreciate the support to achieve two goals. One, through restorative dialogue that creates educators and administrators to come together to address concerns around norms and values so that our actions match our beliefs. And two, in collaboration with community, select a school leader who will enter into a role where the conditions are there to ensure the leader has an impact. This short-term pause is critical for our long-term success, and I'm thankful that we have this opportunity. Myself and other educators will continue to hold the Central Office accountable for providing support to our community to achieve our goals.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Stephen Benjamin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephen Benjamin. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm a resident of Roselandale and a special education teacher at the Dearborn in Roxbury. I really love my job and my students, and like a lot of my colleagues, I appreciate working at the Dearborn, which is in many ways a state-of-the-art facility. This is only the sixth year that the building has been open. But I'm here tonight because we have a persistent facilities issue. There is a lingering and powerful sewage smell that is present in many parts of our building, including hallways, classrooms, some offices, and some bathrooms. To be transparent, it is the smell of human waste, so our school smells like poop. In my classroom, where on many days the smell is there to have the room be usable, we need the door open a hundred percent of the time, an air purifier with the ionizer setting on, and sometimes even the open window, just like back in the COVID days. There was a day recently when I had to leave the room during lunch, and I closed the door but left the air purifier on. Half an hour later, I got back with my students, and the smell had built back up and was so foul that they refused to stay in the room, and I couldn't blame them because it just wasn't habitable. It took forty-five minutes with the door open and us having a special education class in the hallway for the room to return to normal, and we even had to move where we were in the hallway because the smell like reached us as it was dissipating out the door. To be clear, I am not complaining about my school-based custodian leadership teams. They've both been very supportive and responsive. They've tried onsite fixes. They've communicated to facilities through the proper channels. Our union has also supported us and advocated to facilities, and I totally understand that plumbing issues are probably really complicated, cannot be fixed right away, but this issue has been present the whole year, and we don't have a permanent fix yet. Every BPS student deserves to learn in a space that is clean and high-quality, just like the district's plans say. So I hope you can help us get a permanent fix to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Julia Keely.
Hello. My name is Julia Kylie, and I am a teacher at Dearborn Stem Academy, and I am a resident of Cambridge. I am testifying today about the smell that was discussed by my previous colleague at DSA. The stench is similar to that of sewage or a deceased animal and makes the classroom feel uninhabitable. I teach science, and my classroom has seven sinks as well as two floor drains under the safety shower. My amazing colleagues at DSA figured out that the stench was emanating from these drains and recommended the flushing of the drains with water semi-regularly, since the great volume of drains and pipes in my room increased the likelihood of my room to experience the smell. Unfortunately, this is a bigger task than anticipated. The smell is so bad that students say they cannot learn in my classroom. They refuse to enter, and they spray perfumes and Fabreeze constantly, which can further irritate sensitive noses, and they will cough and wince throughout class. My students and I have at times stepped into the doorframe of the hallway or sat next to an open window to seek a reprieve from the smell. I have found that the smell is worse on Mondays and Tuesdays when the drains have been drying up over the weekend. This has prompted me to heed the advice of flushing them with water. However, in practice, this is not as simple as turning on the tap. I run all seven sinks for between ten and twenty minutes, and throughout this time, I fill and walk one thousand milliliter beakers of water over to the floor drains and dump them down continually. Again, I do this for ten to twenty minutes, not because I was told to or because I was made to, but because if I don't, my classroom is uninhabitable. This smell is unacceptable for student learning and my teaching. It is not just a stench, but it permeates. It is so intense that students say they can taste it, and the action of flushing the drains is so time-consuming to do it correctly that no member of DSA should have to do it. I am requesting that this complaint be heard and addressed at the district level for students and staff of DSA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Carolyn Sessler, followed by Kiona Aviles.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Sessler. I am a health teacher at the Dearborn Stem Academy, and I would like to also address the sewage smell that has been happening at our school. It has been present in my hallway of my classroom to the point where my students will not walk down the hallway to come to class. I often have students who complain of the smell and say that it gives them a headache and that it's gross. It is not a constant smell, but happens multiple days a week. Sometimes in the morning, it will not smell, and then as the day goes on, the smell gets worse. I also want to clarify that my classroom is on the first floor, and Julia's classroom is on the second floor that she has already spoken about, and Stephen's room is on the third floor. So this is a school-wide problem and is not just in one area of the school. And as previously stated, we know that our administration and our custodian team have already looked into this problem and done all that they can. And at this point, there needs to be something done at the district level to address it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Kiona Aviles.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. My name is Kiona Aviles, and I am also an elected governing board member and parent at the Henderson Inclusion School. I will be continuing to read our letter that we had started earlier. As evident here by all those who have been speaking and all those who contributed to this letter, during the time district leadership has been supporting the Henderson, trust has eroded faster than it can be built. A new leadership team must be identified to support the Henderson. We offer the following suggestions to the new leadership team. The team must be transparent about all aspects of the Henderson budget. Updates could be comprehensive and given with the intent of having all community members understand. The team must overhaul the current IPT process and ensure that parent voices are equally valued and accommodated, and that the recommendations made are in the best interest of our students and mission of a full inclusion school. The team must be proactive and transparent in the staffing search and ensure that parent members are included in the personnel committee. The principal search must resume immediately. The team must protect the school's innovation mission in all decision-making, from staffing to classroom composition to budget cuts and requests. The preservation of the Henderson's innovation inclusion model must be prioritized. The team must no longer make unilateral decisions, but collaborative decisions. The Henderson needs leadership that respects our community. We need a partner who we can trust with the care of our students and the mission of our school. Thank you, governing board parents, Esther Pimentel, Jessica Butler, Nisha Submarobinon, Kiona Aviles,
Thank you very much.
Margaret Bohera, Fantasia James,
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Crystal Wise, one more name, Eric Robitaille. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Parvath, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is the Grants for Approval totaling eighteen thousand dollars. I'll now open it up to our superintendent for any final comments.
No, Chair. I think this one is fairly straightforward, and we'd just ask for support from the committee on it. I believe it has the information the committee requests.
All righty. Thank you. I'll now open it up to comments or questions from the committee. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvath, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Badbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, Mr. Tran.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The grant is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We have adjusted the agenda to accommodate scheduling needs, shifting the sole presentation scheduled for tonight to precede the fiscal year twenty-five budget vote. Our only report this evening is the proposal to rename the merged BCL McCormick School Community to honor the legacy of educator and advocate and BPS alumna Ruth Batson. I'd like to invite Chief of Capital Planning, Dela Vern Stanislaw, Secondary School Superintendent, Jean Roundtree, and BCL McCormick School Leader, Andrea Johnston, to please share their presentation. First, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening remarks.
Great. Thank you, Chair. So tonight, you will hear a proposal to change the name of the merged Boston Community Leadership Academy, BCLA, and the McCormick Pilot School to Ruth Batson Academy in honor of the Boston Education Advocate and BPS alumna. As a newly-formed seven-to-twelve school, the BCLA McCormick community wanted to choose a name that reflected the school's new identity. During the 2023-2024 school year, Andrea and the leadership team of BCLA McCormick, along with staff, students, and community stakeholders, undertook a public process to select a new name for the merged schools. Students were actively involved in the process, which was finalized in June of 2023. As many of you know, UMass Boston and BPS have signed an agreement to make the BCLA McCormick High School the district's first-ever university-assisted community hub school. This kind of partnership aligns with Ms. Batson's life work, creating educational pathways and opportunities for Boston students. Under the UMass-BCLA McCormick model, high school students will have access to college coursework and resources. Educators from both institutions and a pathway into UMass Boston for graduates will be created. Chief of Capital Planning, Del Stanislaw, will be joined by Secondary School Superintendent, Jean Roundtree, and BCLA McCormick School Leader, Andrea Johnston, to walk through the public process that they followed and tell you a little bit more about Ruth Batson's life and work. But before we do that, I'd like to wish Andrea a very happy birthday and thank her for being here on her birthday for this with us. So happy birthday, Andrea. And now I'll turn it over to Chief Stanislaw.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Skipper. Good evening, Chair Robinson and members of the school committee. I am happy to be here today partnering with the BCLA McCormick School Leader, Andrea Johnson. Happy birthday, Andrea. And Region Eight School Superintendent, Jean Roundtree, to present a proposal for the renaming of the BCLA McCormick School. The proposal to rename the school is another step in the merger process to join both school communities that began in 2021. Tonight, Jean will first give an update on the implementation, the merger implementation process, some highlights and challenges that the community have faced since 2021 school committee vote. School Leader Johnson will present the work that has been done to create a new identity for the joint school community and the request to the school committee to approve the renaming of the school. I would now like to turn it over to Jean Roundtree.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be here with you. So when the merger was originally approved, there were three main goals identified. By school year 2223, to fully merge the two campuses at the Dorchester site. By school year 2223, to fully renovate the McCormick Building to house the new school with the capacity to implement its instructional vision. And by school year 2021, to have created K-six pathways as feeders for the new school. When the decision was made, no one could have anticipated the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on our city and on our world and the subsequent changes that caused various delays. The pandemic delayed the site consolidation and impacted our capacity to fully renovate the building within the approved timelines. As the district adapted, a decision was made to modify the consolidation and have seniors remain at the Hyde Park Campus for the 2023-24 school year. Though renovation work produced two science labs, which are fantastic, a modernized life skills classroom for students with disabilities, a very comfortable guidance suite, and an office for staff, a lot of work remains to be completed. Under the fantastic leadership of Principal Johnston, the school has worked very hard to create the quality educational experience that was envisioned for the joining of these two proud school communities together. The school has deepened its partnership with UMass Boston to become the first hub school partnership pathway program for colleges. The educational opportunities offered to the students at the Dorchester campus are vast due to the creativity of staff and partners despite looming budgetary constraints. In the final year of managing a two-site campus, the district provided an investment fund for the graduation class of 2024. This was done after district leadership met with students who had expressed their concern about feeling left out of the community that was being built at the Dorchester campus. Though these funds cannot fully replace a shared community experience for the seniors, they did provide opportunities for all seniors to experience college visits, integrated social-emotional support, and a senior experience that was structured around their needs specifically. As the final cohort of original students who were part of the original BCLA school, they will experience a graduation as a group, I mean as a distinct BCLA community. So with this, I would like to introduce Principal Andrea Johnston, who has worked really hard through this process, and I'm really grateful for her continued partnership and to see the impact she is having with her community.
Thank you, Dr. Roundtree. Good evening, everyone. So this partnership was, and this process for the renaming itself, was a multi-year endeavor that we engaged in. And in partnership with the BPS Capital Planning Team, as well as the School Committee Office, it was outlined to our governing board the process for renaming. So leveraging the racial equity planning tool, we centered on making sure that all voices of the members of our community were heard and had many opportunities to provide feedback as well, too. And we did this through a survey process where we allowed our students, staff, and then also the community to respond in a survey, in addition to attending our governing board meetings that are always public meetings. In June of 2023, the governing board held our final public meeting where all options were discussed, and we voted for Ruth Batson Academy. And in this process itself, Ruth Batson or Batson showed up in the names that we were choosing. And again, we finally landed on Ruth Batson Academy as the name that the governing board chose. I would like to highlight that student voices were definitely lifted and pushing the renaming of the school. And I'll say that in a sense of, at first, we were trying to pick a piece of both BCLA and the McCormick School to merge together into a name. And then finally, students decided we just needed a completely new identity, and so they said we need a whole new name, as opposed to trying to just merge two school names together. And many students since have completed research of Ms. Batson's impact on the Boston community. The vision of our school is to support and develop our students to be informed leaders who are critical thinkers and also fearless advocates for their communities. Ruth Batson's life story as a graduate of BPS who broke barriers as the first Black woman to seek a seat on the BPS School Committee, and also her lifelong advocacy for a quality educational experience for all students in our city is one that resonates with our staff and also with our students. Because of our mission and vision to develop students who are
Excuse me. Please slow down a bit. Thank you.
Okay, no worry. So because of our mission and vision to develop students who are community leaders and also our education pathway in our early college program, we felt that it was fitting to name the school after Ruth Batson in celebration of her advocacy for equitable education for all. And now I'm going to pass it back to Chief Stanislaw for next steps.
Thank you, um, on, thank you, Andrea, and thank you, Jean. Um, we are asking the school committee to vote in favor of the new proposal, proposed school name. The school community has invested, um, collaborated, has worked collaboratively over the last three years to create a sense of belonging and shared identity for students, staff, and families. If the school committee vote in favor of the name change, the capital planning team in collaboration with other central office teams are ready to work with Andrea and the BCLA team on implementing the name change. The work to renovate the Dorchester, um, campus will continue. As you all know, this body voted last week to approve our submission of the school community, uh, the core SOI to the MSBA in partnership with the school, the mayor's office, and the public facilities department. We are seeking the vote from, we are currently in the process of seeking the city council vote and plan to submit the SOI application to the MSBA by April 12th. We are working with the school and across BPS departments and city agencies to complete and submit that application, and we are committed to investing in facilities for this joint school community. I would like, now like to, um, pass it back to the chair for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Stanislaw, and thank you to Mr. Roundtree and Ms. Johnston. And again, happy birthday, Ms. Johnston. And I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Mr. O'Neill? You're still muted.
I'll defer to after Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cardet Hernandez. Go ahead.
No, I was just, I don't have any questions. It feels super logical and thoughtful and it sounds like it's time for engagement. So thank you so much for a thoughtful presentation and the update.
Yeah. Dr. Hawkins?
I'm actually curious. I mean, every merger, closure, and consolidation that we undergo gives us an opportunity, you know, it's a social experiment. Um, and so I'm actually curious as to with this, um, you know, particular endeavor with a name change, did we learn any particular nuance that we want to take forward as we continue to right the ship of the district? Are there any new, just new lessons or developments that we learned in this process around community engagement specifically?
I think, um, I can, I can start by, um, answering, um, that question just like based on the past year that I had in capital planning, um, and naming like the Shaw and the Taylor and the Sumner Filbrick, um, process that had started when I joined capital planning and sort of like the BCLA McCormick merger that was already voted on and in the implementation stages. One of the things learning from the BCLA McCormick, um, process and something that we're moving forward from this process into like the Sumner Filbrick and also the Shaw-Taylor process is the importance of like how we center, um, how we center the school community, um, in the process and also where students and family has voice and being very open and honest about that at the beginning of the process and, um, actually bringing it to this, the, the, uh, school community, sharing that information so that we're all aligned at the beginning of the process. Um, I think learning that through this process and moving that into, um, the beginning, like we started this process, we, this process just began for the Sumner Filbrick community and centering it that way, like we're getting like sort of positive feedback, started getting positive feedback from that community and taking their feedback and implementing it as part of the process and like, yes, this is the process as outlined by BPS, but this is how we want to bring our collective community along in the process. So the transparency is like really, really, um, working. So taking that from this process and implementing it on like how we're moving forward in all of our merger and even some of our closure and transition process as we're discussing it, I think is helpful.
Yeah, I would just, I would add to that. Um, I think that's right, um, Chief Stanislaw, and it, and I, I also think that the value of having a capital planning department, which BPS never had, uh, is for this very reason, right? That as we, whether it is, um, whether it's consolidations, mergers, relocations to a new building, um, they each require a different supportive transition. Uh, it's something I know Chair O'Neill has brought up. I know other members have brought it up. And so that is something that in this budget, we're considering now for additional resource. I think what's awesome about this one is that this really shows under, um, you know, Principal Johnston's, School Leader Johnston's leadership, you know, how you can take two really different communities and use something like a renaming as a, as both a symbol and a concrete way of bringing those communities together. Uh, and I think it's a best practice that we can put as one of the menu items for communities as they're going through these kinds of transitions.
That's great. Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just specifically to head of school Johnston, um, thank you for, and the others for this presentation tonight. And I really appreciate the thoughtful approach, how you stepped through that. You know, first you looked at, well, should it be McCormick, BCLA? Should it be B, BCLA McCormick? And then realized, hey, let's go a fresh direction, but particularly that that was really coming from your school community. And, you know, as you know, the chair and I were out recently and spent some time with you and, and toured the school where we talked about how the merger was going. We talked about your physical needs and we're glad to be moving forward to a submission to MSBA. Um, also talked about, um, improvements the district can make in the meantime. Um, but most importantly, we talked about the, the activism and the voice, activism is the wrong word, um, the voice and the input and the thoughtfulness of your students and your staff, your faculty, and the feelings they feel about the school and, and how proud you are of what's going on with the proposal with UMass and her, uh, UMass Boston, and what that's going to do, and therefore the reason why to start fresh with the new name. So it was a very, very thoughtful approach and, um, I look forward to the chair sharing a little bit about Ms. Ms. Batson. I, I hope she does as well, but, um, glad to support this and, um, glad things are moving in a positive direction for the school. And look forward to your whole school community being together in one building next year as, um, uh, Mr. Roundtree shared.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you for your time and your presentation.
So I, I'm not sure whether I'm the only person on the, the, um, committee that knew Ruth Batson personally. Um, I grew up during the time of Ruth Batson. Um, she was a good friend of Alma Lewis, um, and who I was a student of, and so knew of her advocacy during that, that period. Um, knew of her advocacy for, um, getting, um, busing going and the issues and needs of looking at the inequities of our school. And then as a professional, um, at a later point in time when she had, um, her foundation, um, and, and did her philanthropy work, um, my work at the museum was supported by that work and we got to know each other quite well um, during that time, my now being an adult in this present. Um, we couldn't ask for a more important person that is critical to the history of Boston and Boston Public Schools um, to be naming this school after in terms, I mean, she was all, her vision was about better opportunities for all students, but particularly our black students at that time who were not getting what they needed. Um, I, you know, I, I'm just happy for that. Also, she's also a girls Latin school alumna, and I'm happy for that as well. So, um, yes, um, thank you. Thank you for, for doing this for all of our community. And, um, I look forward for us to take, um, action on this at our next meeting. So, thank you. So the proposal to rename the merged BCL McCormick will be up for vote at our April 10th school committee meeting. Thank you. Go forth and enjoy your birthday.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. So our final action tonight is the superintendent's final fiscal year 25 general fund budget recommendation in the amount of $1,526,629,446. I'd like to take this opportunity to emphasize and reiterate a crucial point to the public and our members regarding our bylaws, specifically chapter 613, section D. The section stipulates that, quote, "The school committee may adopt, reject, reduce, or increase any item of the recommended budget, provided, however, that if the school committee fails to take definitive action on the annual budget on or before the fourth Wednesday in March of each year, the annual budget as recommended by the superintendent shall be deemed approved as it is formally approved by the school committee." As such, um, let us remain cognizant of the significance of this process and approach it with due diligence and careful consideration. Before I open it to, up to the committee for final questions and comments, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer some final thoughts.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair, very much. Uh, so again, tonight, uh, we are asking the committee to approve the Boston Public Schools FY25 $1.5 billion budget. Uh, as Chair said, it's $1,526,629,446. I first want to recognize, uh, a few members of the BPS budget team who really worked tirelessly to get us to this point. Our interim chief financial officer, David Bloom, our budget director, Serena LaRocque, and our director of state and federal programs, Shira de Kovnik. The team created a balanced budget that is a reflection of our values and our commitment to serving every BPS student. They put in a lot of effort and long hours, and one of them even welcomed a new baby in the middle of the process. I want to thank BPS leadership, our deputies, our chiefs, our school leaders, our educators, our school staff, and our district staff. Shout out to Megan Costello for just constant support in the process. Uh, this has really been going on since last fall. And, you know, our students are the best. Your input and, you know, your input to this budget to support them, it's valued and it's appreciated. I also want to thank our families for their feedback and for their public comments during these meetings. I also want to thank you as the committee. Um, since we first introduced the budget on February 7th, we've held four public budget hearings and school committee meetings around the budget. My team's attended more than a dozen meetings and has just had numerous calls with individual members of you, as you put your own time into all of this, uh, to make good decisions in the process. Our teams worked hard to provide thorough and timely answers to all of the questions asked by the members. And there have been a lot of questions, as there should be, and we've published those and uh, made sure we shared those publicly in the last meeting. Um, we hope that we've helped you to fully understand the complexities of this budget and its impact on BPS students and the school communities. I appreciate what we've heard and what we've discussed in our meetings. You know, we've made adjustments based on member and community feedback wherever we could. Areas such as mental health and social emotional supports, alternative education, school-based resources, our pipeline staffing strategies, transition supports for schools relocating or going through structural changes. In our efforts with restorative justice, these are just a few of the examples of how your questions and your comments and the public's questions and comments have really shifted thinking and support in the budget. These meetings have also helped us think beyond the current budget and really begin to focus and think on the planning and the work in future years that needs to happen to better prepare and communicate information to you as a committee and to the public. The FY25 budget is the first year of many that prioritizes the work differently than in the past. Over the next several years, we've talked about what will be different, how we'll be moving away from weighted student formula that just doesn't adequately fund our schools, how we'll be ensuring all of our schools can serve all of our students by making major investments in the resources required to close the opportunity gaps for our Black and Brown students and provide a continuum of services to meet the needs of our special education students and our multilingual learners. And we're going to begin to shift the footprint of our schools so that our physical spaces better support the learning and experiences that our students deserve. When I came back to the BPS as superintendent 18 months ago, a little over that, um, I brought with me, um, my experience as a, a school leader and a high school superintendent in BPS and as a superintendent in some of our public schools. And my team that's here tonight, they also represent so many years and lessons of collective experience and success in BPS. And it's through this lens that my team and I present this budget to you tonight for a vote. Building a budget is a public process and a journey that includes the voices of many stakeholders in our schools, in our communities, in our central office. And I believe this budget creates an important bridge from ESSER and weighted student formula to one that allows us to build toward a reimagining school funding future. When we started this process on February 7th, I shared that we were at the starting line and that there's much work ahead to transform BPS into a district that provides every student with a high-quality student experience. I shared that at times the work would be messy, that the inclusive education plan and our long-term facilities plan would require multiple years of hard and sustained work and that over those years, that we'll need to make difficult decisions that have been avoided in our district and city for decades. There's many, many things to celebrate about our district and examples every day, as I shared with you earlier, of how we're improving in making the changes that have been long overdue for our students. We're 110% committed to continuous improvement. But we still have a long way to go to become that district that we really strive to be and, and that our students deserve to be. A, a district that meets the unique needs of all of our students, particularly our Black and Brown students, our students with disabilities, and our multilingual learners with and without disabilities. The BPS FY25 budget helps us take steps to becoming that district. It supports a fundamental shift in our practice through its district-wide implementation of inclusive education while balancing the end of pandemic relief funding, or ESSER. And that's a very difficult balance, given what ESSER funding meant to our schools and central office. The anticipated end of ESSER in September of 2024 makes the FY25 budget one of the most difficult in a decade. That's why we began carefully planning for that transition last year in FY24. We started by having schools step down and move ESSER-funded investments to their general fund that they plan to continue in future years. We asked schools to look at everything funded on hold harmless and ESSER and identify what most essential, what there was to keep. We invested $15 million to sustain those investments beyond ESSER with a focus on supports for students with disabilities and multilingual learners. With a focus on supports for students with disabilities and multilingual learners. This budget required us to look at our most critical needs, and there are many. Earlier this evening, you heard some of our passionate and dedicated librarians and librarian pairs. Talk about the importance of our libraries. We fully agree. As a district, we now have two-thirds of our schools who have functioning libraries with a librarian. And we've worked hard in this budget to ensure and make sure we don't reduce any positions. And to add what we could, knowing that we have so many critical areas to address in the ESSER cliff. My team and I appreciate the importance of libraries and librarian pairs, and I just really want to stress this. They hold a special place in the lives of our students, and they're such a resource for our staff. We're deeply committed to continuing our investment from the strategic library plan. Over the next several years as we get beyond the ESSER cliff. We also invested four million dollars to support schools that have seen enrollment increases since the beginning of the pandemic. In many cases, schools had the opportunity to choose whether use these funds to sustain positions and expenses that were funded on ESSER. And we took a number of steps this year to sustain what was critical and what worked well for ESSER. That was budgeted centrally, especially those things that directly impacted schools and student services. Thanks to the support of Mayor Wu, this budget reflects a historic eighty-one million dollar investment from the city. This includes both general maintenance and priority investments. Like inclusive education, continued support of UPK, and early college and career at our high schools. I want to thank the mayor and the city for continuing to make historic investments. So we can change and improve the way we're serving students. This year, many other districts in our state and nation are facing much tougher budgets. Because they don't have the same support we have here. Rather than announce any investments or increases, many districts are facing only incredibly large deficits. And reductions. And the mayor and city support extends beyond the budget. Last week, BPS and the Boston Public Health Commission announced twenty-one million in funding. To support mental and behavioral health and services to support youth and families. The investments are part of the city's response to the need for more mental health supports. As well as addressing behavioral health workforce shortage shortages and a lack of availability to culturally competent care. If we truly want to improve student outcomes, and I know that this is central to our district and to this committee. Then we must carefully and deliberately build the foundation of a district. That meets the unique needs of every student in every school. No matter how they learn, what language they speak, or what neighborhood they call home. Creating an equitable, ethically sound budget is one of our biggest responsibilities as. You know, a s- a school district and as a superintendent. And I'm proud of the budget and I, and I am proud of the process that helped us get to where we are for tonight's vote. So I had asked for this committee's support as we begin the transformative change that Boston students need and deserve. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And now, now we'll open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Dr. Alkins.
Um. Yeah, I think, um, as many of you, um, probably will echo. That first certainly thanks. Uh, uh, a, a broad thank you to everyone that has been involved in this process through. Uh, interrogation and person hours, um, to really put all of this together. Um, and the best faith effort, um, to do what's best for. Our community, um, and, and our students. Um. And so I think those are the first things that I want to say. I also want to acknowledge that it's been incredibly tense, um, for, for me just thinking about all of this, this entire process. Um, and I've said it before, um, on one hand. I think anything that we propose still falls up, still falls short. Particularly because I think ESSER in particular exposed. That when school communities and when school districts do have the funding available to. Institute the type of programming that is necessary. Once that goes away. It only devastates those communities even more so than what they would have been prior to ESSER. That said, the district has been like this long before the pandemic. Um, and so that's also been what's eating away at me as far as. Knowing that it, it, and this is no fault of anyone, but just. That we're underwater and it feels like we're, you know, we're drowning and. You know, on some levels, we're, we're celebrating just being able to, to kiss air and, and make it to the surface at times. And so. For me, just personally, just naming that, like, it's hard to reconcile even with all of the, I think, the positives that. This budget does have, um, within it. Um, I am still curious around. The need for us to right-size the system and the, the speed with which we can do that. Such that we can reinvest back into the students, um, and their futures of that. Um, we've talked about this at least as long as I've been on the committee around. Ripping the Band-Aid off and what does that look like? And the investments having to be more on the side of community engagement to prepare communities for this. As we just heard, like, Chief Stanislaw say, the earlier that communities know about it, the earlier that they can make peace with it, the earlier that they can. Then be on our side. And then it's felt like at least since I've been on the committee, that there has been. At least the district, and that includes us, have not as, not embodied that. And, and that's what's tough about now seeing this, um, and wondering. Is this transformative enough? And then, you know, does this lead to those, to those outcomes? And when, like, when do we really start to, to, to analyze those metrics? Um, to look for that, that transformative change. Um. You know, and. So I think I'm just naming that, um, as a, as something that I've gone through, and this is inclusive of all the conversations that I've had with. Members of the, of, of BPS and, um, you know, thinking that, you know, of course, thinking that, like, I. Supportive of going in the, in, in the right direction, um. And still wondering what aggressive transformative change should look like, um, for us. Um, and what are the things that we can do as a school committee that I think changes the way that we monitor? All these things, because a lot of times we, I think we vote for things. And then we don't necessarily have a sense of what happens after that, or as, as great a sense of what happens after that. And how we're, and how we're monitoring and staying up to date and meanwhile, and, you know, all the meanwhile, you know. It's not, you know, the only person, you know, we're all affected if we have. Children or if we've gone through the, 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 you know, these educational halls in, in, in Boston. Um, you know, and it's tough. Um, so I just want to acknowledge, of course, the. The, 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 the great job that everybody continues to do and continues to wake up and do. You know. Sometimes with one hand tied behind your back. So I just appreciate y'all. And, um. I'm a, you know, I'm an ally in this fight, like, so, um, I'll just stop there, you know, because my time's up, but.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
Um, I just, I appreciate everything, uh, Dr. Elkin said. And I find myself in a really similar position, like, I want to. Vote yes for the budget because I want to be an ally in the work and I want to be a good soldier. And at the same time, I find myself still. Left with like a lot of uncertainty around like our ability to move past just the status quo. And to do something that feels really bold, you know, and I. I'm, you know, I'm struggling with, you know, many things, you know, the. First year, and particularly because I voted no on the budget before, and I, I was hoping that this would be like a year I was, I was ready to go. And because I do see how hard the team is working and the critical. Thinking and planning that's happening, it just doesn't feel, it just doesn't feel. I still feel really unclear about the sort of direction, and I think that's the hardest part when looking at the budget. And for me, it's a few things that. You know, when, uh, the first year we talked about ESSER and we raised real concerns, you know, about. Creating so many ESSER positions, given the number of vacancies and. It was sort of like, there's nothing to see here, it's going to be fine, and the budget moved forward. The second year, we're spending ESSER funding to not hold schools harmless. And we're like, nothing to see here, it's going to be okay, we're moving forward. And at the same time, we're being told that there's going to be like. A strategic plan around the facilities of our buildings and that that would inform the following year's budget. And so it feels like. We're still in this place where we're not able to give kids what they need because we are not doing the hard thing of right-sizing the system with urgency. Um, and so we're going to have. Schools here in the middle of a special education reform still saying, well, like, we want to do collaborative team teaching and we can't do it. And I, 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 I'm finding myself continuously confused about. How we deliver on like accelerating, closing the achievement gap. While we still have empty buildings and. We're unable to move around the adults that we have, so kids have high-quality teachers in their classroom. Um. So, uh, I probably, I probably should stop, and I'm saying I'm grateful for the time that everyone put into it. I still feel like I can't in good faith move forward without knowing what this means, given the fiscal cliff we're still facing. And I don't feel like I have a lot of clarity around that and how this budget gets us there.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, thank you, Mr. Carden Hernandez.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you to the superintendent and definitely the entire BPS, uh. Budget team for your work over the last few months. Um. Since this is my first budget cycle, especially as a member of the school committee, I'm. I want to take a few moments to reflect on the process. Um. The BPS budget is large, it's complex, uh, particularly this year. As we're navigating the end of ESSER funds, as some of the members have mentioned, uh, concerns around that. While also we're making some big systemic changes, uh, to do with how we're supporting specifically. Our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. And, um, as a member of the committee, I really tried to make sure that I was checking in weekly with the BPS team to hear updates, ask questions. Advocate for the team changes that I believe that our BPS students needed. Um, I was providing information in context that I needed to be able to do my job, even though this is not a full-time job for those that don't know. Um. And able to do my job again as a member of this governance body. And I made appointments at visit schools as much as I could. I spoke with a lot of school leaders. And educators to really understand how this budget was going to work out in their classrooms and just holistically in their school committee. I have appreciated the superintendent's, uh, you know, laser focus on creating a full continuum services to meet the needs of all students. This priority hasn't changed from last year to now, and our budget reflects that consistent focus. I'm also, you know, want to give a, a brief shout out, um, uh, and, you know, I'm encouraged by the city of Boston in making. The thirty million dollar, uh, to directly, um, you know, to our schools to shift toward a team-based approach to teaching and learning. Moving away from an old model with just one teacher at the front of a school, um, front of a classroom. So, so to have a more dynamic staffing structure that really is going to meet, you know, the needs of each students that are in those class. Uh, with the ending of ESSER and declining enrollment, we've had to make some really tough decisions, uh, in order to make that happen. Um, but I'm confident that our new investments to share are strategic and focused on supporting our educators so they can support our students. As we add into the first year of implementation of, of this, of our inclusive education plan, I believe this budget does create the foundation of continued learning and growth. There's a lot of anxiety, I'm anxious here, picking on this, around what inclusion really means in each classroom. But I want to make sure that this is ongoing dialogue to make sure that the investments that are being made, but there are, that we're making now. Are doing what we're hoping that they will do. I appreciate my fellow members of the committee, you know, for the continued push to specific metrics and data outcome. Uh, particularly when it came for our multilingual learners. I will be supporting this budget because it took some real steps to support that particular population, uh, and students with disability. In ways that I have not seen, uh, before, especially when I was a student at the Berk between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve. Uh, and was in classrooms with multiple mu- uh, multilingual learners and students with disability. So, again, just thank you for all your work. I think to the members of the public who have definitely participated, have been loud and clear. Uh, and, you know, and, and really making this process go along. So, again. I thank you again to the budget team, superintendent, and the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Pelanco Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh. Y quiero darle las gracias a todos los que han trabajado, eh. Para hacer este presupuesto. Sé que ha sido, uh. Mucho tiempo que han tenido que utilizar para poder poner en maqueta todo esto.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to personally thank all the members and everybody who's been, uh. Fighting for this budget. Much time has been allocated to make this possible.
Eh, realmente, los padres, los maestros. Y los estudiantes y muchas coaliciones han tenido preocupaciones, muchas preocupaciones con el presupuesto. Y desde mi punto de vista, son preocupaciones genuinas.
Have to point out as well that different stakeholders, we have the parents, we have the teachers. We have the students, we have coalitions that have manifested many concerns that are legitimate by themselves.
Con como han dicho mi, mi compañero y agradezco mucho sus comentarios. La, la pérdida de los fondos ESSER ha dejado, eh, una situación difícil, eh, para el presupuesto como tal.
As many of the, uh, school committee members has, had shared before. The, uh, loss of the ESSER funding had caused multiple concerns and multiple losses, if we can put it that way.
Y, y lo puedo dejar de subrayar que, eh, esto tiene que dejarnos a nosotros una lección porque. Nuestro, nuestras familias y coaliciones habían estado pidiendo. ¿Qué es el plan para cuando estos fondos no estén? ¿Qué es el plan?
And we have to emphasize as well that we do have to learn a lesson. As many of the families and the coalitions had been asking the question, what is exactly the plan regarding this budget that is coming?
Que nos coloca en una situación donde, eh, tenemos que decir que aunque es una gran cantidad. De dinero que ha puesto la, han puesto la mayor en Boston Public School para la educación de nuestros hijos.
We have to say as well that it's a significant amount of money that has been put. Through to the, through, to the efforts of the major herself towards the proper education of our kids.
Me atrevo a decir que es histórica.
I would like to say that this has historic proportions.
Así mismo también, eh. Nosotros hemos podido darnos cuenta que el presupuesto tiene, ha tenido tres focos principales de atención.
You have to point out as well that this particular budget has three attention points that I will mention.
Alfabetización equitativa. Educación inclusiva y el aprendizaje en equipo.
Inclusive education, learning, essay, and literacy as well. Those are the three factors.
Entonces, presentado así, se siente fabuloso, ¿verdad? Podemos decir, wow, hemos tenido un presupuesto que presenta un enfoque. en, en, en la alfabetización equitativa, en la inclusión en los estudiantes multilingües.
We have to say that we have the right focus and it feels fabulous as well that we have been able to concentrate. In particular, we have to do with literacy and the equality and the equation, the education itself.
Pero cuando vamos profundizando en el presupuesto, vemos que aunque no tenemos mucho, aunque algunas cosas no, no se ven tan, tan claras o no la entendemos tan clara.
Have to point out as well that when we look deep into the budget, there are things that are still not clear.
Escuchar el lunes a una superintendente en la reunión que estuvo contestando a las familias.
So we had the superintendent on Monday where the, a meeting on Monday where the superintendent was responding, answering questions from the families themselves.
Cuando expresa sobre lo fondo del título uno, ella ha expresado que para el, para el expendio del dinero del fondo del título uno estará vigilante de que los, los directores, de que los principales de las escuelas utilizan ese dinero verdaderamente para las necesidades de los estudiantes.
Regarding Title One, the superintendent was very specific in saying that she was very vigilant and will remain vigilant regarding the proper use of the funds towards the benefit of the students.
Que ella y su equipo estarán vigilantes para que esto así pase, para que los, los líderes escolares que quizá no sepan cómo pueden hacer mejor provecho de este dinero, puedan hacer mejor provecho de este dinero y verdaderamente se use para las necesidades de los estudiantes.
So the school leaders and the principals themselves, they will be, they will benefit themselves with the vigilance that the superintendent will try to convey working with the team towards benefiting the, benefiting the students.
Otra cosa que escuchamos el lunes de ella misma es que el plan inclusivo que está presentando el distrito ha sido suspendido en logrado de que, que hicieron K2 séptimo grado también y para aprendizas del idioma inglés.
And I think that we heard from the superintendent on Monday as part of the inclusion plan is that this is being partially suspended regarding the K zero, K two and the seven grades regarding the English, English learners as well.
Y yo creo que es importante clarificar esto para que las familias puedan ver que la petición que hicieron, más de 400 familias representando 50 escuelas firmaron una petición para pedir esto.
We have to be very clear for the families. It is very important that we have to note that more than 400 families spanning over 50 different schools, they did sign a petition asking for this specifically.
Y esto es importante. Gracias por escuchar a las familias.
That this is of critical importance. Thank you very much for listening to the families, to their voices.
Entiendo que va a haber, entiendo que van ustedes a seguir, a tener un seguimiento para estas escuelas que les van a proveer una guía a aquellas escuelas para la implementación, para que no continúen, porque algunas escuelas tengo entendido que están implementando, están teniendo esta implementación y sé y espero poder tener noticias de que van a instruir a esos líderes principales para que sepan que esto está suspendido.
So I do hope that these leaders and these principals are instructed basically and informed that this, there's a suspension in this regard. It is critical for them to understand that you and the team will be able to guide them in this regard to, for them to understand that there is a suspension in this regard.
Y como una miembro del comité, me hubiera, me hubiera gustado escuchar la exposición, la presentación del presupuesto, qué fueron los desafíos que tuvimos el año pasado con el presupuesto y cómo estamos venciendo estos desafíos con el presupuesto que estamos presentando hoy.
As a member of the school committee, I would like to hear or I would hope I could, I could have heard, what were the challenges that we confronted last year? And what is it that we are doing to overcome the challenges this year?
Entiendo que ya tenemos que tomar una decisión, un voto, ¿verdad?, para el presupuesto en el día de hoy.
It is my understanding that we do have to make a critical decision regarding the vote regarding the budget that we have to do that today.
En mi corazón, yo pienso que debemos pensar cuando vayamos a votar qué beneficios más a nuestros estudiantes.
It is very important to know when I say that from my heart, when we are going to vote, we have to have in mind what is it that is going to benefit all our students.
Si no voto a favor del presupuesto, pienso que voy a trazar esto.
If I do not vote in favor of this budget, I would be delaying the process somehow. That's what I think.
Y pienso que tenemos que seguir avanzando.
And I do believe that we have to continue showing progress. We have to keep looking forward.
Por mi parte, voy a estar vigilante. Voy a estar pidiendo actualizaciones sobre cómo se van a gastar el dinero, dónde está, cómo están gastando el dinero. Voy a estar pendiente con, por mi posición, voy a estar vigilante. Y mi voto, voy a hacer el voto, pero voy a estar vigilante de que se cumpla verdaderamente y que los aprendices del idioma inglés puedan tener esa partida que merecen y esas atenciones.
I will have a vote. I will have a vote and I will vote tonight, have it in mind as well, the English language learners that they'll be able to have the benefits of those allocations. I have to say that as a school member as well, I will be very vigilant in terms of watching closely how these resources are being allocated.
Así que muchas gracias y vamos a tener fe.
Thank you very much. And it is a matter of keeping our good faith and looking forward.
Thank you. I says, Mr. Tran.
Hi, everybody. First of all, thank you to Superintendent Mary Skipper and her team for providing a very thorough and detailed budget and responses to all the expressions and concerns raised by members. And I received that a couple of days ago and I really appreciate that. Second, I'd like to thank all the members who have raised concerns and comments and ideas regarding these, you know, this budget and the ESSER funding effect. I appreciate all of you. I appreciate every one of you and I, there is no doubt in my mind that all members of this committee are really committed to moving in the right direction for the students, for, for the betterment of the students. Some of us are experience, are, some of us have experience in education, some of us have experience in earth areas. And we all bring together, you know, a host of experience that I believe would assist the superintendent and the mayor in moving forward with you know, with whatever the, the, with all the initiatives and goals that we set out to achieve. So with that said, let me just get back into the, the real car of my concern. I, I know that everybody knows that I have serious problem and have serious concerns regarding the inclusion plan. Why do have that? Why do I have concerns regarding that? Well, first of all, prior to becoming a lawyer about over 30 years ago, prior to that, I was involved in education as a teacher, bilingual teacher, as well as curriculum developer, bilingual curriculum developer for, for a number of years. We all know that the, the bilingual education program was approved and, and implemented in the late 70. But immediately, early in the 80, I guess in about 80, 81, there is a push to incorporate or to, or to eliminate the bilingual program. Some have real concerns, legitimate concerns, but most that I read back then was out of fear of social fear, let's say. I think you guys know what I, I mean. So the push was there and the push has always been there. And lo and behold, the, the, the the students with disability was also included in, 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 in that batch of, of integrating into the, the the mainstream program, for lack of a better term. So somehow ELL students and students with disability, particularly students with disability who are ELL are somehow clumped together for the movement of integration. And it has always been that way. Well, in early 1990, there is a guy who's a very, very wealthy guy. He's, he's a, he's a billionaire by the name of Unz. I believe he was, he was back then in California. Had a movement to annihilate, not eliminate, but annihilate any programs that, that deal with dual language. It has never been successful, the attempts of having the inclusion of ELL students as well as students with disability into, you know, the, the, the regular program has been pushing for a very long time and has never been fully prepared, despite the fact that we have many other program, despite the fact that we have laws and everything that, well, as a matter of fact, this is one of the, 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 this area of, of, of issue was one of the main drives that I went to law school back in the early 90. Just to make, to educate myself, to make sure that I, I am prepared to deal with it. But then I got involved in civil rights issue, but this is also a civil rights issue. The educational program dealing with students with disability was then strengthened by the federal law when they passed the ADA. Lo and behold, all the IEP plan and everything still have flaws, still have flaws. And has never been completely, completely overhauled to the, you know, to the extent of the expectation of groups that deal with those issues. Never. I haven't, I haven't ever seen it. And here we are. Maybe, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's time I recognize that. Maybe it's time after four, more than 40 years for the, for the inclusion plan to be full implemented. I was hoping to see that. After 40 years, over 40 years since 1980 as a matter of fact, now the 19, now 2024, so 44 years. The program's still there. The problems are still there. Well, here we are. We are pushing for an inclusion plan and I, you know, I, I, I appreciate, I don't believe, I really don't believe there is any ill motive behind it from, from, from the Boston Public School system. And I do believe that there is a legitimate goal in, in ensuring that inclusion plan will work for the betterment of all students. I hope that and I, 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 I do pray for that. So here we are. When you, when you prepare the plan, when you put in front of us the plans, I'd be very frank. I see a regurgitation of ideas and projects and initiatives that I have seen in the past that failed. But who knows? The, the, the current climate of the society may, may, may alter these plans and may, may make them better. I don't know. So with all that concerns, even the, even all the, 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 the projects, programs that are somehow must be in compliance with ADA, must be in compliance with OSHA and all that. I hope that this time around, the implementation will work. I'll take a, a, you know, I'll take a, a position of observing, watching and carefully analyzing everything that you put forward. So for that, I move forward with your, your budget. Knowing the viability of other projects, programs, initiatives aside from the inclusion program depend on that, on, on the budget. So despite my, my own little concern, personal concern out of my over 40, 44 years involving in this, I will move forward, hoping that it does work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my fellow members for their thoughtful comments and to the superintendent and her team, particularly the interim Chief Financial Officer Bloom and the entire team that worked on this. And also to the parents and school leaders and teachers that have been speaking out and giving us their feedback and comments has definitely impacted my thinking. You know, when I think about this budget, it's such an unusual one because we have had this most unusual ESSER funding for the past three years and I, I struggled to how to frame it, right? It was, it was given to us almost out of the blue by the federal government to assist. Their goal, they said, was assist with recovery of learning or learning loss through the pandemic and to help us assist with facilities on things like air quality, et cetera, that came out of the pandemic. And I think the district has balanced the spending, you know, we're never in total agreement with how it'll spend, but I, I look at some minor things like you can look at the air quality of any of our classrooms online right now. Never had that before. Right? We have bathrooms being improved, things like that. And in spite of what we heard today about the D of one superintendent, I hope that's going to be looked at very promptly and very quickly. But I think we as a committee, as we're school boards across the country, we're very focused on, on how the district spent and what the results are from that spending. I think in Boston, we also work pretty hard to make sure that the step down from that spending was relatively as painless as possible. And as the superintendent said, a lot of other districts, you know, the superintendent said, let's be clear. ESSER allowed us to spend like we should be spending on our schools. I think that's almost a direct quote of you superintendent and you know, the superintendent and I were recently in an event where the Secretary of Education, the U.S. Secretary of Education Cardona was saying, it's not that this funding is going away. It's that he, he views that the federal government is passing the baton back to the states and expecting the states to keep up the funding. Well, that's great, but some of us have watched track meets where the, the baton is trying to be passed and the baton gets dropped. And I think Massachusetts is, is is doing okay on funding relative to many other states. But it's really this city that has stepped up here and, and we're blessed that we have, that we are in a city that is providing that increase in funding for us. So I applaud how the district has approached this spending, knowing that ESSER was going to be this temporary incremental federal funding, as I think of it, was going to be going away. I think of last year's movement of positions from ESSER to general funding to prepare for this. I think of allowing school leaders to make some decisions uh, and some school communities to make decisions on how some of this funding was going to be spent. And I've spoken to a number of school leaders, as many of you have as well, to get their thoughts on this year's budget. I do recognize that the district has made, you know, some centrally funded decisions on requirements that we want to have, such as nurses, et cetera, school psychologists, but allowing schools to make the, and school communities to make those final decisions. And that, I think, is some of the feedback we've been hearing from schools. I also appreciate what's been done differently in this budget process. Um, including the seventeen pages of written answers to questions that we all asked and having the opportunity to stop and go back and read through them and really see the the thoughtful analysis the district provided in the answers to us. I appreciated that, as well as our discussion last Wednesday, I found very, very helpful indeed. So I do appreciate the changes made and, and I am going to support this budget recommendation of the superintendent's. I do have to echo the comments a number of my fellow members have made though, because we do have tough decisions in front of us. And you know, when I think about ESER, a very conscious decision was made. It was a recommendation of this committee that we went along with that we spend some ESER funds on the soft landings for under-enrolled schools. And I think the rationale that was explained to us was that this was being done to have less forced transitions. As our students were getting back to in school learning, it'd be tough to all of a sudden be closing schools, under-enrolled schools, and have students make, come back to schools that they didn't even know. And the soft landings covered that for a few years and, and I understand that. But without ESER next year, we have to make those hard decisions. We cannot continue to support so many under-enrolled schools. And I think the superintendent fully understands that. I see changes in this budget alone, right? The, the consolidation of up Boston with up Dorchester, the two together, the closing of the Frederick. And in particular, one thing that we haven't spoken a lot about, but really struck me was the consolidation of classrooms. So really looking first at classroom by classrooms, and if we have room to consolidate, there can be some savings there. But it doesn't take away from we have too many schools where we are not allowing our students to have that high-quality student experience that we, that we promised them, that we want them to have. We have students that are in buildings that don't have a gymnasium, or don't have an auditorium, or don't have a proper lunchroom, or the nurse is in a closet, or they don't have the library, as we were hearing about today. And we have so many wonderful libraries in our schools across the city, but all of them deserve to have that. All of them deserve to have fresh food that's prepared right on site. All of them deserve to have art rooms and music rooms, et cetera. All of our students deserve that. And it's going to be up to us with the superintendent's leadership in making some hard decisions as we move forward. And I do appreciate this work is going on and what Chief Stanislaw and, and her team is doing right now about capital planning and involving communities, as we saw with the McCormick, et cetera. But it's going to be time for us to take that next step. And I know it's just going to be a step-by-step approach. We're not going to have a master over the next ten years. I believe, how can we predict what's going to happen in ten years in this city? But we certainly need to be a big, need to see a big picture and need to move forward and so that we can achieve that goal that we have to have all of our students have a high-quality experience. And that, that's what drives my thought process on this. I do support this budget that has been made, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us to continue to push on those points that many of us have been discussing about tonight. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I certainly want to echo all of my colleagues' comments in thanking you, Superintendent, the budget team and all, and everyone, school leaders, teachers, families, everyone that has both worked hard to get us to this budget and who have all been and continue to grapple with the impact that it will make. Um, I thank you for answering those questions and I hope that those, that those questions will be posted on our website for others to read. And as more questions continue um, to come up, that we will be eager to answer those and get that out there. The more that we can educate our whole community around the decisions that have to be made and the reality of where we are, um, it will at least allow people to understand the difficult conversations that clearly we have to have. All of us have mentioned the fact that this budget, particularly coming out of the pandemic, coming off of ESER, brings us back to those difficult conversations that were started five years ago around creating the appropriate balance and footprint and the creation of a high-quality school district that really serve the needs of all of our students better. Um, you know, more than many other districts, you know, we are, we are juggling any number of decisions simultaneously, our buildings, our efforts to both come off of ESER and look at the impacts of that budget, but also moving towards a inclusion district, which will impact every classroom and every school. But the other piece for me with this budget is with tonight's vote, the conversation is far from over. Uh, we're really just at the beginning of this process. There are many conversations that we will continue to have about what will happen as we open school in September. What changes will be made to our budgets? What other things will we have discovered? Um, you know, last year we had an infusion of fourteen hundred students that we weren't expecting. And we've not even had a chance to fully talk about that impact to our district. I mean, that was not a known factor and yet we were able to make that happen. So there are more things that we have to make transparent as to the issues that the district continues to grapple with during the process of a budget. Um, you know, I understand the, the concerns around, um, what this, what inclusion is going to mean for us, for multilingual learners and for special needs students. And we want to continue to have those conversations. Um, you know, we heard on Monday night from parents who, um, are concerned because they don't understand what the options will be. And some of that we won't know either. Um, and so one of the things that I've spoken to Superintendent about this earlier today, that on behalf of the committee and in the conversations that we've had, that I am, you know, I want the district to keep us informed of the outcomes of implementation. And I'm asking for a quarterly report that may either be a superintendent's report, but also, or a formal report, but starting in October, the first meeting of October, January, April, and July next year, we will get quarterly updates of understanding what has happened in the implementation thus far. Where, what, where have adjustments needed to make? Where are things going smoothly? Where were they not? So we're not waiting a year to come back to have this conversation. But so that we are starting a new way that we are making sure to hold ourselves accountable and the district at the same time of really keeping us up to date. Um, you know, and then in terms of just thinking about the budget process, which, you know, as I said, you know, there are times when I find it difficult to manage my own home budget. Never mind how I'm trying to understand and for all of us to, to manage a billion and a half budget. Um, and so one of the things, um, and I will say, Mr. Mudd, I've heard you loud and clear, um, that we are going to ask for a program budget booklet um, that can be read and understood by everyone. We know that the budget folks understand what they're doing and where they're putting things, but you know, we have a multilingual community and we really need to make sure our materials that are available for people to look at really can be easily understood by us all. And also looking for a consistent budget template that all schools will use so that there is some understanding across schools of what, what it looks like to build their budget. Um, so that, you know, that those school templates are really family-friendly. Also, again, hearing that different schools do things in different ways. Really hoping the district will work together collectively with, with school leaders on training about them building their budgets, but more importantly, how to have authentic parent participation and engagement with, with, with their budget building. And to make sure prior to even getting into the budget conversations that all of our schools have functioning parent councils, school site councils, um, school-based equity roundtables, same thing for educator input so that they have the foundation to have these conversations because we're going to have more things to be talking about as we have to move forward into the closure, merger conversations. And so without these foundations, you know, we, we can't really plan budgets honestly and openly together. Um, and then, and finally, um, you know, we, we, we can't continue to come together from December to March to talk about a budget, um, that is like this, that has so many issues involved in it. And so again, um, I'm looking forward to the creation of a budget oversight committee that is, comes out of the school committee, but engages any number of people that we will have to talk together. But with the idea that, you know, this budget is a full-year commitment, um, not just the, 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 um, voting on it, but you know, we want to do two things. We want to understand the implications of what has happened to what we've done with this year's budget, but we also need to, to roll back to, to many of the things Mr. Cardet Hernandez raises, that as we are making decisions moving forward, how is that going to impact our next budget? You know, where are we going to need to see changes? How, how are these, how is the immediate budget and the future budget all working together? And how are we beginning to have more open conversations and understandings because all of our decisions really come back to our budget and our goal of getting more of our monies directly impacting our students. Um, this is a lot. I mean, as I said, you know, we wrestle with this all the time. It's far from over. It's just beginning. But I also am, you know, going to vote in support of this budget with those caveats that, um, we have to hold ourselves as school committee members willing to step up and spend a lot more time rolling up our sleeves to look at and understand, hold the, hold the district accountable and ourselves accountable um, to do this very hard and difficult work together. These are not going to be easy conversations, but they're important and critical conversations as we move forward and, um, create a better district for all of our students. With that, if there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's fiscal year twenty-five general budget recommendation for the amount of one billion, five hundred twenty-six million, six hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars as presented. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvitz, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
No.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, Ms. I don't think we heard you.
Me?
Yes.
Oh, um, no.
No.
No. Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
No, but an ally in the work as we keep mapping the system.
Ms. Lima Barbosa? Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Lima Barbosa.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, we need to have you unmute.
So sorry, Chair. I'm over here trying to manage multiple things, but I don't have any other questions at this.
No, we're voting.
We're voting.
Yes, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes with five yays and two again.
Right. Thank you all. And, um, as I said earlier, the work continues. We'll now return to public comment. Ms. Parvitz?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Is there any new business?
Um, yeah. Oh, Michael, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, I, I mentioned during my comments, but Superintendent, I, I hope we're gonna get some very professional plumbers out to a three or four-year-old building. Matter of fact, let's get the contractors who built the building out there and find out what the heck is going on there, I hope.
So, Vice Chair, um, I did, excuse me, I did check with the, with the team. There's a, there is a, a project group already on this, uh, and we'll update the staff on it. Um, but there's, um, there's, uh, we're, we're working, uh, and we have to do testing. And when we do the testing, uh, it has to be when no one's in the building. So, um, there, there's a full group that's on this issue and aware of this issue. I want to reassure everyone. And we'll communicate with the staff the timeline tomorrow.
Thanks. And I, and I hope that timeline gets expedited as much as possible.
One hundred percent.
I mean, this is a brand new, this is but a
I know.
Three-year-old building.
Yeah, no, I know. One hundred percent.
Thank you.
Dr. Alkins?
Thank you. Um, one, continuing to be an ally in this work, um, for sure. Um, I think also in the spirit, thank you, uh, Chair Robinson, for raising the notion of, uh, an oversight committee, but I think this also extends into what we've been talking about with the creation of working groups specifically that, um, committee members can be more active and play a role in so that there is consistent communication and under, um, for us and then also for the public. I'd I'd love to more collectively around the, the makeup of those groups are and then what the, just the respective compositions balancing out um, community input, BPS input as well. And I also think um, as we're on this, this topic around like what is correct and how this factors into future budgets. Um, I've said this to fellow committee members. I've said this to folks. Um, I think we also have to have a very critical conversation around how unions specifically, um, are contributing to the efficacy or not contributing to the efficacy of the impacts that we want to see for our, for our, um, students. They offer several protections, um, which I think are necessary. And at the same time, like we have to, I think, exhaust all of our efforts to truly examine every input that is going into academic outcomes critically. Um, and I very much be in favor of thinking about how we can have these conversations um, in a way that is constructive, critical, but also productive at the same time. So I look forward to, you know, building this out, um, especially over the year. Um, and I think it's incumbent upon us as school committee members to have this, not just as something that we do, but really as a requirement for just participation in this body.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, um, those are my thoughts in, in terms of new business. So I'd love to see this done at a future meeting where we to this.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Um, three things. One, thank you so much, Chair, for your words at the end. Um, and I appreciate, uh, like Dr. Dr. Alkins, the sort of push around accountability. I am for new businesses, hoping we can move that even one step further to like calendaring, like a tool for school committee members to see the calendar of what's happening when at a given meeting. Um, I feel like our ability to zoom out would also give us clarity around accountability and what's coming. And um, so I, I'm just like proposing that we build a plan to make that happen. So we, we have an idea and can agree of like, what are the real themes that we're build a plan to make that happen. So we, we have an idea and can agree of like, what are the real themes that we're looking at week over week? And then I think the same is true for working groups. You know, I think it will allow folks, at least for myself, to feel like I can go deeper, build relationships I don't have um, and understand a particular part of the puzzle. Um, and then in terms of upcoming agenda items, I think as we're thinking about this budget and we're moving forward, I would like to see us add to an agenda item, like an increased frequency around how we're talking about the bottom third schools, transformation schools, or some sort of performance update. I feel like every time we have that clarity, we feel closer to understanding the system. But I also think that should be guiding a big piece of our budgetary decisions, including the hard ones that we know we have to make. And then the same is true around how I would like to put an agenda item up to revisit the conversation we had around um, school choice clarity and the way that we communicate um, and, and inform families about their choice options. And maybe then an agenda item can be looking at the choice system in its totality, but particularly the, the communication side of how we're getting information out. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Tran?
Oh, just a, a very quick comment. I, I do support um both your recommendation and member Alkins regarding a, a, a work group from, from us to monitor the, the, the movement as well as the spending. I, I know that it should be in, in, in the superintendent's uh purview, but I, I do see the importance of having us be part of that, not as, you know, not as a control, controlling members, but as, as someone who monitor it. So I, I do support that. Thank you.
Great. Great. Thank you, everyone. Um, that concludes our business for this evening. And as a reminder, this is our last virtual meeting. The next school committee will take place in person on Wednesday, April tenth at six PM at the Bowling Building in Nubian Square. We will be holding hybrid meetings and folks can tune in through Boston City TV or on Zoom. Because we're going back in person, I want to remind you of the changes. At first, we'll be starting at six PM to allow for travel time during the evening commute. Secondly, we want to continue to offer virtual testimony. So the committee will continue to offer two public comment periods with the first comment period capped at one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up to remote testimony. After one hour, the committee will move on to its regular business. And anyone who did not have the opportunity to share testimony will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. And of course, written testimony is always welcome. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a, is there a motion?
The mood.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Provitz, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.